Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the January twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Paul Rock, we have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Frallinger?
Here.
Ms. Krajewski?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
And Mr. Phelps.
Here. Uh, Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board in their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. America. United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation.
One nation. Under God. Invisible. Liberty and justice. Alrighty, um, moving on to, uh, number two, we will now hear from Ms. Parker, and I'm not sure if Ms. Hughes is on, but, uh, Francesca, you're more than welcome to take it away.
Oh, she just came in just now.
Okay. Oh, hello, Ms. Hughes.
Who's going first, Francesca or Grace?
Um, Grace is, but if you want, I could start it. Okay.
There's, she's on.
For the Kindergarten Academy, we celebrated our first charter assembly, recognizing those students who did a wonderful job being respectful, responsible, healthy, and safe during the month of November. We are also very proud to say that every child earned a K coin. We celebrated by having a pajama day for everyone. On Tuesday, December twenty-second, students at the Kindergarten Academy celebrated Polar Express Day. Although this year looked different, the students watched a special reading of the Polar Express from conductor Mac and Santa sent the children in the kindergarten academy a special message.
At Glen Olden School, Glen Olden students continued to shine throughout the month of December. We were thrown some curveballs, but the students and staff continued to push through. Our PBIS virtue of the month was generosity. This particular virtue can be somewhat difficult to demonstrate during virtual learning, but this was just one more obstacle our students showed us they could conquer. Students were helping each other in breakout rooms and offering various ways to help each other, and just showing one another they were there for support. Our school participated in two spirit days this month. The first one was on December tenth, and this one was to support one of our very own. One of our middle school friends is courageously fighting Patton's disease, and we all dressed in blue to show our support. Our second spirit day was on December eighteenth. Students enjoyed wearing PJs to school. Mr. Stube's morning announcements continue to be a hit with the students and staff. The students are listening attentively when new PBIS challenges are announced, because they want to be entered in the weekly drawings. We even had a special guest speaker one morning, Santa. Santa had a special message to share with the students on the last day before break. Our stocks fundraiser is coming to an end, and we want to thank the community for participating in our yummy fundraiser. Keep an eye out in the future for our spirit wear sale.
Through our holiday giving, we were able to sponsor seventeen children along with two private donors and a sponsorship from Norwood Cares. Santa came to visit our kindergarten students on December twenty-second. Dr. Chris Goldberg, our STEM teacher, has been selected as one of the foundation teacher mini grant re- sorry, receptions this year. This grant being administered through the Franklin Mink Credit Union Foundation, which will award ten teachers in Delaware County with mini grants. This grant will also allow Dr. Goldberg to purchase specialized cardboard and circuitry kits to promote, among other things, the engineering design process. These kits will be utilized in the classroom this year as a part of a smaller individual kits for in-person students and also for STEM club, which serves both in-person and virtual students.
Prospect Park. Thanks to the generosity of the entire Prospect Park community, more than a dozen families received gifts for the holidays. Prospect Park Towne watched sponsored nine families, including seven bikes and one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in gift cards. Glen Olden Congregational Church, families from our school and the community, and Friends of Interboro also sponsored families with gifts and more than twelve hundred dollars in additional gift cards. This combined generosity helped to provide gifts to more than thirty children. In keeping with the season of giving, our school was happy to welcome back via Zoom former Prospect Park student and chief of police of the Susquehanna Police Department, Robert Miller. Chief Miller made a thousand dollar donation to our school. During a short Zoom assembly, Chief Miller spoke to our students about the importance of kindness and a positive attitude. Before we left for the holidays, we also had a special Zoom meeting with Santa for our first and second graders. The big man talked about our students, talked with our students, as we heard some fun holiday stories.
For Tinnicum, this year, due to COVID, there are not many fundraising options available to us. One that we could do was our gift card fundraiser that was run by home and school. Gift cards were ordered and delivered just in time for the Christmas holiday, thanks to our home and school for their hard work. On December eighteenth, we held our first virtual book award assembly. Our students watched a Zoom presentation in their classrooms that was hosted by Mr. Fanning and Mrs. Farmer. Students were acknowledged for showing respect, responsibility, honesty, and safety. Thank you to Mrs. Berghheimer for putting together the excellent video presentation, and congratulations to our student winners. On December twenty-second, our students and staff were given the option to come to school in their PJs for our holiday pajama day. Many of our holiday traditions were put on hold this year, so it was nice that the students and their teachers could still participate.
At the high school, the Interboro Select Choir may not have had any of their usual in-person performances during December, but they did learn and record Silent Night for a virtual recording. This happened entirely through Zoom rehearsals and online submissions. Please visit the Interboro YouTube channel to see the final product. The blood drive that was being held on December seventeenth is now being held on January twenty-sixth. The blood drive will be held from two PM to five PM at the Prospect Lodge, number five seventy-eight, eight twenty-two Lincoln Avenue, Prospect Park, PA, one nine zero seven six. Students under eighteen will need a parental form. The link to sign up is www dot red cross crossblood dot org. And if you have any questions, you can email Riley dot Keller at interborosd dot com. And this concludes our report.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Parker, Ms. Hughes, and please, uh, if you do speak to the chief back and for his generous donation, we do. We appreciate that. Moving on to number three, uh, Ms. Riley, recognition.
Yes, thank you. Uh, January is School Directors' Recognition Month, which honors members of local boards for their commitment to providing quality public education for PA schoolchildren. School directors generously contribute their time and talents to the advancement and success of public education. This is a year-round commitment that often goes unrecognized. Um, especially during COVID, I can't thank this board enough for all the time and hours that they have put in to the many meetings that we have had, um, starting last March all the way through now. Um, just really trying to manage this, and it wouldn't be possible all of what we have accomplished and been able to do during this time without the support of the board. Um, I know I'm very fortunate that I work with all nine of you. Um, I tell everybody that all the time. Uh, I think I'm spoiled because you are such a great group and do work together for the betterment of the students and this community. So, on behalf of the administration, um, you're going to be receiving a little gift. I am going to share the screen for a minute so you could see it. Everyone is going to be receiving this plaque for your desk. Um, and it says, um, excellence awarded to, um, and your name goes there, and appreciation and distinguished recognition for your hard work, dedication and commitment to excellence, Interboro School District Board Member. So, we'll deliver these to your homes, uh, and hopefully you will find a nice spot to display it in appreciation for all of your work. So, thank you to each and every one of you, um, and to the children, uh, and the staff here at Interboro. We appreciate your support and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to number four, Mr. Evans, public comments. Do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, number five.
Motion five point one, the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Both. Motion carries nine zero. Next, we will hear, uh, from our solicitor, Mr. Pupio, for the solicitor's report. You're.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Phelps. Uh, Happy New Year to all. Uh, this has been, uh, an extremely, uh, busy month uh, for my office, uh, specifically for this evening. My office has, uh, been working on the memorandum of understanding between the Interboro School District and the Chester County Health Department, which is the acting agent uh, for the, for Delaware County as our health department, along with the resolution, uh, and the policy to enable, uh, the district to begin to serve as a, a rapid testing site for students and staff with the appropriate consent. In addition, my office has been working through, uh, the various appeals that have been filed by the taxpayers, uh, from the reassessment. Uh, all of those, believe it or not, all of that paperwork has not yet flown, uh, has not yet caught up with the court system as well as my office. In addition, uh, in addition, there was a court action, uh, that we joined that we, that we intervened and participated in, but were not a named party simply because we didn't have the opportunity to get the vote in time to join the, join the mandamus action, but it was to extend the deadline because of the problems with the post office for some taxpayers who may not have gotten their notices of appeal. That extension runs out next week. So, by next month, we should have a, a complete picture as to how many appeals exist and what type of valuation issues there are. That would conclude my, uh, my report, Mr. President. Thank you kindly, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pupia. Moving on to, uh, number seven, Mr. Evans.
From the Financial Department, motion seven point one, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point two, the fund disbursements in the amount of eight million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-five cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Uh, number eight, do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Alright, moving on to, uh, number nine, we'll go into our committee reports. Uh, first up will be nine point one, Mr. Chabon, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Finance Committee met on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Um, the first item was the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. We discussed the following items. Uh, first was the tax index, which is the maximum tax increase that, uh, can be passed without going, um, for exception. The, uh, Act One Index Max for Interboro this year is three point five percent. Historically, we've stayed well below this amount. There is a procedural vote on the agenda tonight, uh, basically stating that we will not go above the Act One Index if, um, it is passed. The second piece of the budget, um, our finance director provided us with a preliminary look at the revenues and expenditures for the budget. Um, currently, eighty percent of the expenditures are negotiated salary and benefits. In this budget, salaries increased one point two million dollars, and the first look for benefits increased, um, approximately nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. There was also an increase in our contribution to PISers, which has increased steadily over the last couple of years. Sixty percent of our revenues come from real estate taxes. The number we discussed at the finance meeting are, um, the revenues with the new assessment numbers that were conducted by the county. There is some uncertainty, as Mr. Pupio just alluded to, um, with the revenues at this point because of potential appeals. We will be monitoring those, and we will be discussing them throughout the budget process. Overall, the preliminary budget shows a two point eight million dollar deficit with a zero percent tax increase and a one point three million dollar deficit with a three point five percent tax increase. Again, most of this comes from the salary and benefit increases, but we are still setting up department budget meetings this month, and will continue to decrease that deficit as best we can. Again, it's just a preliminary, it's a first preliminary look the last couple of years. Um, you know, there is a sticker shock in the January finance meeting, but we have worked, uh, steadily to decrease that, uh, as we have set up those budget meetings. And the, the healthcare looks come in a little bit lower sometimes. The second major item we discussed was the estimated money we should be receiving from the federal government through the Second Relief Package that was passed in December. The allocation for the, uh, for public education was four times greater in this package. And we are, at that time, were estimated to receive one point eight million dollars. The current figure, um, as of last Friday was one point nine million dollars. Um, now, there are some stipulations on what this money can be spent on, such as HVAC, technology, and instructional supports. As I mentioned above, the mo- most of our expenditures are salary and benefits. Um, this money cannot be used to offset salary and benefits. The administration presented some options with, uh, preliminary figures that we will discuss, uh, next month and the following months, um, as we allocate that money. Potential items include updating the district data center, purchasing more Chromebooks, purchasing, uh, Promethean boards for all classrooms, and a math and ELA curriculum. Um, these items all would have to be budgeted for through our, uh, these would have to be budgeted through the general fund budget, but by strategically doing this with the one point eight million dollar, uh, money, we would not have to, um, use, uh, the fund balance or, you know, tax, uh, revenue to pay for these things. So, we're trying to strategically purchase things that, you know, we know are big-ticket items, that we won't have to allocate funds in the future. Finally, we discussed preliminary financial statements, and board members had an opportunity to ask questions. We adjourned the meeting, and our next finance meeting will be held the first week of February. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. That's all I have for finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Moving on to, uh, nine point two, the GBO meeting, Mr. Goldsboro.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, following the Finance Committee meeting on Monday, uh, January eleventh, uh, we had, uh, General Business Operations meeting, and, uh, the first item, uh, that was, uh, discussed was, uh, Mr. Galloway updated us on the LED signs that are going to be, that were, uh, approved, uh, for their design, and there will be, uh, LED signs placed at each of the community schools, at the high school, and also at the admin, uh, kindergarten academy. Uh, that would actually be a corner sign. Um, and, uh, so, those, those were all, uh, approved, and, uh, those, the funds for that are actually coming from leftover bond funds, uh, and they should be installed, uh, by the end of March or end of April, uh, depending on, depending on, uh, some different situations, but, uh, that, that's what, uh, that was the first item that was discussed with Mr. Galloway, and then the second one, the second thing that was discussed was the fire and burglar alarms and, uh, the Verizon POTS lines, which I didn't know what POTS was, but I found a, a new acronym, uh, plain old telephone service lines. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, all of our, most of our schools have those telephone line services, and those were being used for fire protection and for burglary, uh, burglar alarms, and, um, they were very old systems. They were not integrating with any of the other systems that we had. And, uh, we are moving to a cellular system, um, in, uh, which will be able to provide a phone call, a, a text, and email to, uh, i- individuals, including Mr. Galloway, uh, if there happens to be a, a fire or a burglary alarm. And, uh, so, those are going to be covered by, uh, safety and security grants that we had, uh, we had, um, secured previously. Um, and then the, uh, the last thing that was discussed during the GBO meeting was the, uh, District Equity Inclusion Diversity Plan, an update on that from, uh, Mr. Abitable, and he informed us of, of what they are looking at and what they're doing, and, and some surveys that are going to be done, and how to incorporate and, and get everybody, uh, working together for this plan. So, that's, uh, that's, uh, the, the things that were discussed at the GBO meeting, and our next meeting will be, uh, at the beginning of February, and that completes my report, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Moving on to nine point three, uh, legislative, Mr. Chabon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Um, the state legislature is going to start working on their budget. Uh, when they start to get into the budget meetings, I will provide updates, um, as it pertains to education funding, um, that impacts Interboro. They are, so PSBA is holding two events that, um, are available to all board members, and if you are interested, uh, please let me know. I will send you, I will share, uh, the links, um, if you're interested. So, first, PSBA is holding a spring virtual advocacy day, um, I believe in March. I will, I have a signup link if you are interested. I will, I will send that, uh, to you. Also, PSBA is holding a Zoom monthly exchanges for all school di- directors throughout Pennsylvania. This is a networking opportunity. So, they are Zoom meetings, um, you know, if you're available. Again, I will send you the link if you are interested. Finally, as I say in the finance report, we received federal dollars to help with the impact of COVID. Um, with the new administration that, uh, was inaugurated today, there is also potential for more money for education. So, um, the, the group is keeping an eye on that in terms of the federal, um, legislature and what potential opportunities there are for more money, um, to help offset some of the COVID, um, issues. Uh, and that is it, Mr. Phelps.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Chabon. Moving on to nine point four, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsboro.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, I, I don't have any, uh, report for that, because we haven't had any, any additional meetings.
Alright, thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to nine point five, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The, uh, Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on January sixth, twenty twenty. Approve a contract with Reading School Districts for DCIU to provide curriculum review, course development, and professional development. Also, we approved of a purchase of a virtual reality welding simulator. I have no idea what that is, but it sounds very interesting. Uh, also approved was a partnership agreement between DCIU and Scenario Learning and Safe Schools Online Training. Lastly, we approved the purchase of Apollo Alto Network Firewall. The next DCIU Board of Directors meetings will be held virtually on February third, twenty twenty, at six forty-five PM. That's all I have, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay, at this time, uh, Ms. Parker and Ms. Hughes, yous can be excused if you would like to jump off. You're more than welcome to hang on there if yous would like, but, uh, if yous have to leave, we can understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, moving on to, uh, number ten, Mr. Evans, personnel.
Yes, sir. From the Office of Personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved, starting with ten point one on page two and going to ten point one-one on page six.
Second.
Okay, motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion eleven point one, with regret, that the following retirement would be approved. Kimberly Ann King, kindergarten teacher with thirty-five years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
If I may.
Uh, yes, Mr. Goldsboro.
Congratulations to Ms. King. That is amazing, thirty-five years. Uh, did she teach kindergarten all thirty-five years? Wow, that's amazing.
Kindergarten, kindergarten, and I believe first grade, but majority of her time has been kindergarten.
Wow, wow. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your, your service to our, to our district and our community.
I know, when I was reading the agenda, I was looking at that, and I was thinking to myself, oh, my gosh, thirty-five years of watching our kids come through there, through kinder- like, that has to be so rewarding for her, I'm sure, seeing them kids every year, you know, the, and I'm sure many of them have stopped back to see her and like, oh, you taught me kindergarten, so that's very enjoyable, I'm sure, uh, and, like, Mr. Goldsboro, we thank you for your service, thirty-five years. That's, that's a lot. That's a lot. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion twelve point one, that the Board of School Directors approve four school Generation Genius for grades K to eight at a cost not to exceed nineteen hundred dollars to be paid from Title IV funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, pupil services, that the following items be approved, motion thirteen point one to thirteen point three.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's, motions carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, fourteen point one and fourteen point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Uh, next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, fifteen point one and fifteen point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Phelps, if I may, real quick.
Yes, Mr. Goldsboro.
Uh, these are the items, uh, that were, that I talked about in the GBO meeting. So, if, uh, anybody in the, in the public that's watching, uh, that, that's what the, these items are, were referring to.
Thank you, sir. Um, the other, r- real quick, uh, is there any idea when we will be starting the signs, Ms. Riley? Do you know, uh?
I believe we've placed the orders, Mr. Phelps. I don't know the timeline, but, um, I believe Mr. Goldsboro said March or April, and I'm pretty confident that's the timeline that will be, that will be on, and I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion sixteen point one, that the Board of School Directors approve the index resolution not to exceed a three and a half percent increase for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, consistent with Special Session Act One of two thousand and six.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Phelps.
Mr. Chabon, can you?
Again, uh, just to reiterate what I said in my report as well, um, this is just a procedural, uh, vote, just saying that we will not increase taxes greater than three point five percent. Um, this is not saying anything that we are increasing taxes three point five percent. Um, and I don't want anyone in the public to think that that is what we're doing on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17 that the Board of School Directors approved the independent contractors agreement between Inner Borough School District and Berchard V Blackburn Transportation Consultant. Effective January 1, 2021 to June 30, 2021, not to exceed $1,500 to be paid from district funds. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Phelps has had a quick comment about this as well.
Yeah, Mr. Shavon.
Again, I just want the, the public to be aware that we had a transportation audit last year. And you know, there were some things that we need to work on and that is why we are hiring, hiring a contractor to help us fine tune some of the policies and procedures that we have. So that is the reason we have this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Shavon. Yes, I always want to mention, you know, with the transportation, it is a constant moving target, it seems like. Everything changes so fast with it that, you know, for the amount of money we're paying this gentleman, it's worth every cent, believe me. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18, the Board of School Directors approved the lease agreement between Chithester School District and the Inner Borough High School swim team for pool usage for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. At a cost of $3,200 to be paid from district funds. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approved the preliminary Inner Borough High School Program of Studies book for the 2021, 2022 school year. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Frallinger?
Aye.
Ms. Perduski?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yeah.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 is a roll call vote, motion that the Board of School Directors approved the three-year lease license, three-year license agreement with Rising Hope. Risen, I'm sorry, with Risen Hope Church for use of various inner borough school district parking lots. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I would just like to comment that I know Ms. Riley and the administrators made sure that there were certain dates that were blacked out. So it would not interrupt any school district functions or whatever, so nobody would have to worry about that. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Frallinger?
Aye.
Ms. Perduski?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yeah.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approved the following memorandum of understanding between the Inner Borough School District and the Inner Borough Education Association. Under the terms and conditions of the collective bargaining agreements post F F C R A COVID M O U. Second.
Motion is, has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Phelps, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Goldsboro.
I just want to commend the administration and the I E A for working together. For. Individuals in a, that have been put in a particular situation, which is not of their own fault. And, and giving, giving them a viable option. And, and it is, it is, is good to see that both administration and I E A can work together. In that regard, in a situation like this.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Frallinger?
Yes.
Ms. Perduski?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shavon?
Yeah.
And Mr. Phelps.
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22, the Board of School Directors approved the following memorandum of agreement between the Chester County Health Department and the inner borough school district to provide COVID-19 testing at an, at no cost to the district. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from, from the board?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, Mr. Shavon.
I just wanted to, you know, commend Mr. Popio and Mrs. Riley for working on this, you know, with COVID and working with the Chester County Health Department. And they're trying to get us, you know, being able to come back to school full time is a huge undertaking. And we're, we're taking baby steps there, but you know, this motion and the next couple ones, we're getting closer and closer to, you know, getting there. So I want to thank Mr. Popio's office and Mrs. Riley for her weekly work with the superintendents in the Chester County Health Department for this. And so I don't have to talk again the next couple of motions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shavon. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 23, that the inner borough school district Board of School Directors call upon the General Assembly to secure the proper amount of COVID-19 vaccines in order to vaccinate our educators now. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 24, that the Board of School Directors approved that the district has entered into a memorandum agreement with C C H D regarding Project ACID. The board hereby incorporates the minimum participation requirements as set forth in the M O A into the district policy manual. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 25, that the Board of School Directors approved the second reading of the following policy in the category of programs, 105 dot two exemption from instruction. Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Do we have any old business that anyone would like to address? Hearing none. We will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. As Grace Hughes mentioned in the student reports, inner borough award, well Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union Foundation awarded ten teacher mini grants to benefit learning. Out of the ten teachers in Delaware County, inner borough had two. Dr. Goldberg from Norwood, which Grace did a wonderful job of explaining his award, his grant award, which was to acquire cardboard and circuit building kits. But we also had Mr. Andrew Herman from the high school who wrote a grant to purchase 60 premium student subscriptions of the Student Motion Animation App. To help create public service announcements for Kaleidoscope. So I wanted to congratulate both of them and thank them for taking the time to write those grants that would benefit students in their school buildings. I also wanted to congratulate Kim King upon her 35 years of retirement. Kim's an incredible, incredible teacher. She was a teacher, of course, when I was at the kindergarten academy and very, very dedicated to her students. When we started transitional first grade over at the kindergarten academy, Kim King was who I approached to take that role. Because she truly is a master teacher, dedicated to her students. And there's teachers like that are very hard to come by and, you know, she's just incredible and she will be missed. I know this was not an easy decision for her to make, but it's the right decision for her at this time and we will really miss her. And she has really left a legacy. As you said, I think it might have been you, Mr. Phelps, that teachers or students and families would come back to visit Ms. King. And that absolutely happened to her. They would come back and visit and wonderful things to say about her. And she will be missed, but I do wish her the best in her retirement. Also, there were two motions that the board passed tonight. One was the resolution in support of acquiring vaccines for all of the educators here, not only in inner borough, but in Delaware County. This resolution is being put forth by all school districts as a collective measure to present to our legislators, Department of Health, Public, Pennsylvania Department of Education. To really assist us in getting the vaccines as soon as we possibly can. The goal is hopefully to have vaccines in early February and educate, and vaccinate educators throughout the county over the months of February and March. The other motion that was approved was to enter in an agreement for COVID testing within the schools. Then our nurses have been training on that right now. We will be starting with our staff on a voluntary basis. And then the eventual goal is with consent by our parents to provide testing for students. We are still working through all of the details of that, but we will be sure to provide parents plenty of time. We will be doing some town halls to discuss that process, what it involves, to make sure that parents are able to make an informed decision. If they would like to have their child or children tested for COVID while they are in school. And also potentially after school, depending upon how we set this, set up our program. So please look for more information. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from any board members?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I would like to say congratulations to Sydney from Prospect Park who, for representing inner borough on the kids baking championship. She did an amazing job. I watched that show with my family and I was just amazed. I can't even boil water without burning it. And she was doing things that were unbelievable and she was just really represented called, or inner borough in a very good light. So congratulations to Sydney.
Mr. Harris, when we get back to in-person meetings, we'll have to invite her to a meeting. Maybe she'll, maybe she'll bake something for us. Show us her skills.
She made some really good desserts, so let's get her to make some pies or cupcakes or something like that. It'd be amazing.
We'll work on that.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any comments? I would just like to piggyback on Ms. Riley, thanking Ms. King. We do appreciate her service and, and her dedication to this district. Thirty-five years, you know, it's a long time for anybody. That's, that's the kind of people we have working in this district. They, they work from the heart. They're here for the long haul. They put a lot into their, you know, their, their work ethic and their dedication to this district. And we do appreciate it. And she's one of, one of many, I'm sure. You know, she's not the only one, but there's so many of them out there, but we do want to thank Ms. King. Okay, um, the inner borough school district will continue to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the inner borough school district website at W W W innerborough S D dot org for further information. On Monday, February 1st, 2021, the Finance G B O Committee meeting will be held at 7:00 P M. The next work session of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be held, held on Monday, February 15th, 2021 at 7:00 P M. Next, my lighting's a little bad in here, I'm sorry. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, February 17th, 2021 at 7:00 P M. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your time and coming. Thank you, everybody.